Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, notice of this meeting was given by way of notice filed with the township clerk, the Home News Tribune, the Trenton Times, and posted on the bulletin board in the South Brunswick Township Municipal Building on January 12th, 2024. We have roll call.
Mr. Nathanson?
Yeah.
Mr. Beerman?
Here.
Mr. Bae? Ms. Patel? Mr. Salvi?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. White? Mr. Luden?
Here.
Uh, Ms. Connor?
Here.
And Dr. Pedromo?
Here.
Okay, first order of business is the election of a chairperson for 2024.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Dr. Paul Pedromo as chairperson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Mr. Luden's second.
Mr. Luden's second.
Seeing no other motions, we can close out that.
Yeah.
We have, that's a roll call actually, right?
Yeah, it should be a roll call.
There's a roll call on that, so there's a motion for Dr. Pedromo for the second, uh, for chair of the planning board for 2024.
Mr. Beerman?
Yes. Under prejudice, though.
Under arrest.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Luden?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Nathanson?
Yes.
Dr. Pedromo?
I guess yes.
Congratulations, Dr. Pedromo, on your nomination chair for 2024. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to, uh, Dr. Pedromo, his chair, uh, for the rest of the nominations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Well, sir.
And good evening to everyone, and I hope everybody enjoyed their holidays. I guess it's time to get back to business. We had a snow day or two, and now it's time to get back into action. At this point, it is time to, uh, elect a vice chairman. Any nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Patel. He stepped up last year, and when he had to fill in for you, Mr. Pedromo, he did a wonderful job, so I nominate Tarak Patel.
Second by Mr. Luden. Any other nominations? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Beerman?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Luden?
Yes.
Mr. Nathanson?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Pedromo?
Yes, thank you. And before we go any further, I just want to make sure we have three members that have been reappointed this year. I just want to make sure everybody has been sworn in. Dennis is not here, I don't know if he's been sworn in, we can do that at the next meeting. Calpano is reappointed, and I don't know if she's been sworn in. And Mr. Beerman is back with us again, but I believe you've already been sworn in.
Oh, 100%.
Okay, so-
Cento per cento, as our Italian cousin said.
Cento per cento, so all the voting is legal from here out. We move to the resolution for the appointment of our recording secretary. As everybody knows, DeShane has been with us for a number of years now. She looks younger every time I see her, and we're glad to have her, she does a great job for us. Would, uh, we have a resolution in front of us, would someone make a motion to approve the resolution?
Uh, move it.
Mr. Nathanson for Mr. DeShane Pittman as our recording secretary. Second by Mr. Luden. Any discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beerman?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Luden?
Yes.
Mr. Nathanson?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Pedromo?
Yes. We move on to our next resolution, which is for the appointment of our senior secretary. Here again, we have someone that served this board for a long time, uh, Tammy Simone. Most of you talk to her occasionally, we speak all the time. All the stuff we have in front of us goes through Tammy's hands, she makes sure our packets are put together, she makes sure that all the background stuff has been provided, and all of you saw those big piles of, uh, uh, plans that were on this desk a few minutes ago. She makes sure all that is put together, she signs all of that, and then, uh, either myself or Mr. Patel have to sign off as well. So there's a lot of, of backroom work that Tammy does for us. May I have a motion to approve the resolution for Tammy Simone? So moved by Mr. Luden, second by Mr. Salvi. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beerman?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Luden?
Yes.
Mr. Nathanson?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Pedromo?
Yes. We move on to the resolution for the adoption of our 2024 meeting schedule. Just a bit of explanation, the last time we were here, uh, we thought that we were going to be moving to Tuesday nights. The town council has taken over Wednesday nights, but they will be meeting the first and the third Wednesday, and we will be meeting the second and the fourth Wednesdays of the month, which means our next meeting will be next week, January 24th. The only exception is we only have one meeting in November, because that's when the League of Municipalities meets, and, uh, three quarters of people that's building are down there for those meetings, so we only have one meeting, and that will be November the 13th, I believe. So if you've all had a chance to look at the schedule, are there any questions anyone has? Okay. Motion, please, to approve the resolution for our, uh, planning board schedule for 2024.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Mr. Patel, second by-
I'll second that.
Ms. Councilman Beerman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beerman?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Luden?
Yes.
Mr. Nathanson?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Pedromo?
Yes, thank you. We move on to the adoption of the, uh, bylaws. I hope all of you have had a chance to look at it. I try to read it at least once a year, because there's details in there that we need to know, if you ever, if you got a chance to look at it, uh, on a night when, uh, the Mets aren't losing and the Yankees are, uh, sometimes winning, uh, take a look at that. Motion to approve the resolution for the adoption of our bylaws.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Miss Councilman Beerman, second by Mr. Patel. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beerman?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Luden?
Yes.
Mr. Nathanson?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Pedromo?
Yes. We move, we'll move on to the appointments of the subcommittees. Unless there are other people who want to step forward, we will keep the subcommittees the same as they have been. Mr. Nathanson is in charge of the Board of Education and keeps us informed of what's going on over there and how, uh, our projects may be influenced by, uh, and influence what the Board of Education does, so it's a good liaison person. Mr. Nathanson's been on the Board of Ed since 2002?
Correct.
Yeah, a year after I started, and somehow he stayed on and hasn't given up yet.
And zoning and planning since 1995.
Right, so, uh, God bless him. He has a granddaughter, I thought he'd slowed down, but I guess not yet. When, when she starts-
Soon, soon.
When she starts dancing-
There you go.
You'll be there, so you'll miss a few meetings. Thank you, Mr. Nathanson. Environmental Commission, Mr. Whites is not here, as you all know, he's, uh, very interested in environmental issues, and, uh, if anybody else wants to be involved with the Environmental Commission, uh, if you let us know, uh, I know there's some vacancies, and that includes anybody who may be watching or in the audience here. So that's Mr. Whites, and then the master plan, uh, the committee will stay the same unless there's a, uh, problem or an objection, that would be Mr. Luden, Mr. Bae, Mr. Salvi. So, uh, I don't think we're due for anything this year, Dennis. I'm sorry, Brian, yeah, it's not this year, but things do come up, and if we need to, we're ready to move on now. Now we move on to the appointment of our board attorney. As you can see, the resolution is for the return of Mr. Shammy, who's been with us for a couple of years now, and when he's not here, his son James steps in and does a good job as well. So could I have, uh, a motion to approve-
So moved.
Mr. Luden to approve, uh, Mr. Shammy?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
And seconded by, uh, Councilman Beerman. Any discussion?
No, I, the, Shammy and Shammy, the team-
Yes.
Has done a good job for us-
Absolutely.
In the past, so, uh, I say let's just move this forward and get on.
Amen.
Thank you.
Amen, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beerman?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Luden?
Yes.
Mr. Nathanson?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Pedromo?
Yes, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to, uh, the resolution for the appointment of the board engineer. As you all know, we said goodbye to Mr. Zelinski at our last meeting in December. He was with the board for over 20 years, I believe-
Yep.
And he is retired, and, uh, he was with CME. We have gotten to meet a new young, uh, engineer who's with the Alamo Group. As you remember, the Alamo Group stepped in last year and were our substitute engineers for that big project that we had with the public service, and they did a fine job for that. I got a chance to meet Mr. Schwartz, as we did most of you. He is a graduate of Rowan, he graduated in 2017. He has a great deal of experience in water and all the, uh, water regs and sewage and so forth, hydrology, I guess he called that.
Hydrology, yes.
As well as environmental issues, so he will be a welcome addition to our board, and we'll keep us apprised of that. So this resolution is for the appointment of Alamo associates as planning board engineers for 2024, and Mr. Schwartz will be our, is a senior project engineer, and he will be our main person to come for this, so, uh, motion, please.
I'm gonna make that motion, Mr. Chair, and I look forward to working with, uh, Mr. Schwartz and the Alamo Group this year.
Right.
Let's, let's start another long relationship as we had with Ken Zelinski and CME.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Patel. Any discussion?
No.
No. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beerman?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Luden?
Yes.
Mr. Nathanson?
Yeah.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Pedromo?
Yes. Welcome aboard, Mr. Schwartz, good to see you with us. We move to the last appointment for, uh, the beginning of the year, this appointment of our affordable housing litigation attorneys. As you know, uh, with all the affordable housing, uh, litigation and discussion going on, uh, this group has been serving us for, oh, six, eight, 10 years, I guess it's gotta be, at this point, uh, and that just goes on. Once in a while, we hear that a, uh, litigation has come to a conclusion and a result has been turned over to us, and these guys have a great deal of experience, so. Motion, please, for a resolution appointing Vogel, Che, Collins, and Schneider as our planning board affordable housing litigation counsel.
So moved.
By Mr. Luden, second by-
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Councilman Beerman, roll call, please.
Mr. Beerman?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
He's not here.
Mr. Luden?
Yes.
Mr. Nathanson?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Pedromo?
Yes, thank you. Now we move on to the part where, uh, Mr. Shammy gets to earn his keep by swearing in all our board professionals. So if you all would stand up, that includes Mr. Bignell, who's, uh, the senior man.
Mr. Bidlack, will you be, uh, testifying before, just in case you are, sir?
My name's not allowed, of course, I probably shouldn't do this.
Yeah, exactly, yes. I ask you all just to raise your right hand, if you will. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give, any and all hearings before the South Brunswick Planning Board for the calendar year 2024 will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Fine, thank you, gentlemen. You can now kiss the bride.
Yeah. You guys and ladies, see what a wonderful job these guys do for us. By the time everything gets given to us, 99% of the legwork has been done, and it makes our life a whole lot easier, uh, and, uh, great bunch of guys to work with, and Jake, I hope, hope Mr. Bignell doesn't give you a hard time. If he asks you to play golf, make sure he brings golf balls, because otherwise, he'll make you pay for his golf balls, okay? Okay. We are going to go right into our regular meeting, I'm going to forego the call to order and the pledge of allegiance, as well as the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call, so we will go right into, uh, motions for adjournment, that's item four on our schedule, on our, uh, agenda. I believe there are several of these that we need to go through.
Actually, there are all of them.
You got an adoption of resolution.
Well, no, we do, yeah, we do, we'll do that, uh, but we have to do the adjournments first.
Okay.
So let's do the adjournments, how about we do file 23028, Ali and Sahar Akbar, Block 86, Lot 81, address is 87 Major Road. This application for minor subdivision with bulk variances to create two lots from one existing lot on a 4.07 acre lot in R2 Zone, uh, is carried from 121323. Do we have a date yet, Mr.?
February 28th.
February 28th, without notice, or do we have to renotice at the beginning of the year?
But we've never renoticed before.
Okay, that's fine.
No, there's no need to renotice if, in fact, it's done you.
Unless the board, certain ones the board may want me to, but-
No, no, okay, so without notice, without notice. February 28th, you said, Brian?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Motion, please, to change file. 23028 to February 28th. Mr. Luden, second by-
I'll second that.
Mr. Patel, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. We move on to the site plan application, this is 3942 U.S. Route 1 property LLC, Block 86, Lot 75011, address 39423944 U.S. Route 1. This application for preliminary site plan approval to construct a 100 by 50 pole barn and a 30 by 50 office building for a landscaped nursery on an 11.38 acre site in the C3 Zone is continued from August 20, August 2nd, 2023, and December 13th, 2023. The date will be-
That one's February 28th as well.
February 28th as well. Motion, please, to move this application to February 28th without notice.
So moved.
Mr. Luden, second by Mr. Patel. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Now we have two, uh, files to look at for the Haddad Organization, we'll do each of them, I presume they're going to be together, or?
I'm gonna keep them together on March, for March 13th, they still got a lot of work.
Okay, so this is file 23016, Haddad Organization, uh, 12, Block 12.01 and Lot 15.06, 231 Herod Boulevard, this application is for preliminary site plan to construct a 49,120 square foot warehouse addition on an existing 387,845 square foot warehouse on a 19.73 acre lot in the I3 Zone. This is carried from 121323 and scheduled for February 28th without notice, and file 23-039, Haddad Organization, blocks-
No, March 13th.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said there, okay, so we'll do the one.
No, 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 the two Haddads, you, you said we was gonna keep them together, so yes, I said March 13th for both.
Oh, March 13th for both, I'm sorry. Okay, March 13th, I misheard you. Okay. Second, Haddad Organization is file 23-039, that's Block 17, Lot 14, and Lot 16.011, as you can see, separate lots, different address, it's 161 Dock's Corner Road. This application for an amended preliminary site plan to pave an emergency access road and add truck parking on a 17.04 acre lot in the I3 Zone, also carried from December 13th, 23, to March 13th, again, without notice. So motion, please, for both those files. Mr. Salvi, second by-
I'll second it.
Mr. Luden. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Good, we meet, we'll move on to lot, file 22-029, this is Jonathan Eker, it's Block 25.01, Lot 3.111, the address is 205 Davidson Mill Road. This application is for a minor subdivision with a bulk variance to create two lots from one existing lot on 3.56 acre lot in the RR Zone. This is carried from 10/18/23 and was continued on 12/13/23, and will be heard on-
February 28th.
February 28th without notice. Motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. Nathanson, second by-
I'll second it, sir.
Mr. Patel, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, the last of our, uh, reschedulings will be file 22-021, this is Fortune Builders, it's Block 93.09, Lot 42.01, the address is 3176 Route 27. This application for preliminary site plan approval with bulk variances to construct a 6,600 square foot addition to an existing, existing office building on a 1.5 acre site in the C2 Zone. This is carried from, uh, October 18, 2023, and December 13, 2023, and will be heard on-
February 14th.
February 14th without notice. Motion, please.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Motion by Mr. Patel, second by Mr. Luden. Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Great, so that takes care of, uh, all the motions for adjournments of hearings, I don't believe there's any other motions. We move on to item number six, which is citizens unagendized statements. We leave a portion at the beginning of every meeting for, uh, citizens from the public who are present to come forward and speak on a topic that is not an agenda item. Anyone who wishes to do so is free to come forward. At this point, seeing none, I will close that portion. We will then go to the approval of our minutes, which we have no minutes, uh, to approve at this time, and we move to our first adoption of a resolution, which you have a copy of in your chart, this is Acme Motors. This is a final plan approval to construct a 2,195 square foot addition to an existing 18,000 square foot building on a 5.29 acre site in the C3 Zone on a property known as 2050130, uh, designated as Block 29.01, Lot 5.06. The hearing, uh, was, uh, carried out on December the 13th, as you remember, Mr. Stahl was the engineer. This is the resolution memorializing all of that, uh, and so, uh, we need a roll call for, uh, this resolution. First of all, motion?
Move it.
Moved by Mr. Nathanson, second by Mr. Salvi. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, so you have the list of eligibles for that, go ahead, Ms. Pittman.
Mr. Beerman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Nathanson?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
He can't, he can't, he was, hm, he voted no.
Who?
No, he wasn't here, what, Mr. Nathanson, you weren't here?
No, I probably, yeah.
No, no, he was here, Mr. Luden was absent.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nathanson.
That's fine, yeah, Mr. Nathanson voted yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Salvi?
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Pedromo?
Yes, so that's fine. That takes care of that, and if I am not mistaken, uh, that's the main business of this evening, just all business and reports. I would like to remind everyone, um, we've had two small snowstorms, according to township law, you have 24 hours after the stop of snow to plow your sidewalk, and many kids that walk to school, uh, and need to make sure that the sidewalks are clear so that they can go to school safely, as, as well as it decreases your liability if you're taking care of your lawn, otherwise you've got, uh, your sidewalk. And if there's enough snow that it covers a fire hydrant, please clear that as well so that the, uh, fire department doesn't have to come and dig out in case there's a snowstorm and the fire, which has happened, believe me. So I would do that, anything from the mayor, I don't, I don't believe there's anything going on, okay, good. We, we do congratulate Councilman Beerman on being elected to the deputy mayor spot, so, he moves up in the standing.
Congratulations, sir.
Well deserved.
Congratulations. So this is less time he'll have to play golf as well, so.
Don't worry, a lot of business is conducted on golf, of course, that's right.
If we can get Mr. Bignell out there and he has Mr. Schwartz buying him golf balls, maybe he'll join us, so, that'll, that'll be fun. Great, congratulations again, Ken.
Thank you.
It's wonderful. Anything from the board members? No. Anything from the Board of Ed, Barry? No, nothing, school's back in session.
Yes.
We've had, I guess, our first snow day in two or three years.
Three years.
In three years, so, uh, that's that, and I guess we have another storm coming Friday?
Friday.
Yeah, hopefully that-
We're already looking at-
Yeah.
Two to four inches, possibly.
Oh, during the daytime, it'll be during the daytime, yeah, so, uh, keep an eye out for- So keep an eye out for, it's, it's put, it's sent out on Nixle, and it's also sent out to the school system, to the kids via, on the, on the radio and television.
No, they get, they also get messages on their phone, and there's emails that go out.
Oh, okay, so it's, it's, I'm getting old. I still like to listen to the radio when they announce the closings. I remember as a kid, listening to WCTC and waiting for them to get to the H's, because Highland Park was gonna be off, and it meant, didn't have to go to school, could shovel snow in the morning, make a couple of bucks, and then go down Dead Man's Hill down by Donaldson Park.
South Brunswick, they said, there's no driving by seniors, so...
Okay, that's fine. So Mr. Nathanson, thank you for that.[1706.03]